So, March 28th. So, construction may be in the fall.
Yeah, 120 days after.
Can you give more mics for the audience? And then do you want to talk about the easements? Do you have any upstairs with these?
The easements, these are the town owned easements. Permanent side, utility pole, and then the driveway. And then the other ones, the small park cemetery.
Across the street from the Bagnall School?
And what is the purpose of the easement again? I'm sorry, I'm taking minutes also. What's that?
The temporary easements are to enter properties and, you know, to fix driveway aprons, like the grade of the road might be different than the driveway grade. So, we have to blend it in.
Because you're doing 97.
Yeah, it's not a taking, but some of them are permanent taking that we're getting now.
So this, does this cover, like, personal property easements too, or no?
No, this is just town.
Just the town, just town, that's it.
Just town, all, like, we went up to a conservation meeting Wednesday night. We got one from them, because they own a piece of land on 97.
Yeah.
What happens with personal, it doesn't matter?
Personal, we're sending them out certified mail.
Okay.
They should be receiving them today and...
Okay. So they sign them and...
And they'll sign them and send them back, or they'll call, I left my numbers. So they'll call for questions, and then we have to go see this.
There's two for each, for you to just, you to sign. So we need to vote to let the chair sign.
I'll make a motion to have the chair sign. Hit my glasses off.
It's right here.
Oh, okay. Where will we get the grant?
Yep, to grant the chair.
To grant the chair authority to sign off on temporary and permanent easement request on Route 97 as the following.
Okay, do you want me to?
Okay.
Want to list all those? Small Park Cemetery?
Small Park Cemetery, Bagnall School, Bagnall School, Bagnall School, and Bagnall School.
Yep, thank you. Do you have a second, Joe?
Second on that?
All in favor?
Aye.
Nice, need to sign this here. Right here. Above signature?
Yes, that's the owner.
What's it say, 1212?
Yes.
Is it just one?
No.
Another one?
Yep.
See, that's it on those two, huh?
Yep, on the two with the tabs here.
These are, um...
There's one packet for each easement.
Each easement, okay.
That's the same type of format the residents are getting.
It is?
Yep, same thing, with the cover letter and the plan of their property.
If a resident doesn't sign off, would that, would that cause the project to go slower or not get started?
A little bit. What we have to do is, we have to get the appraiser and then do a taking.
We need to, again, to have a vote on this?
It doesn't take that long to take a taking.
Okay, did it, okay.
Because we're only talking...
Slivers.
Thirty square feet, you know, like a foot of property. Most of them were hoping to, what they call donations.
Right.
They just sign it, which they, in other communities, that's the way it works.
That's it, two on that?
And they're going to gain sidewalks in that project, aren't they? They're going to gain some sidewalk?
Eight foot one.
My side of your luggage. It's five altogether, two on each.
Everybody's going to gain a wider sidewalk.
Right.
That's good. It's safer for the kids.
Right, that's how this started with...
Yeah, good.
It's not ADA compliance either, the sidewalk now, so that...
Right.
This one?
That's how we started.
Would it be on one side or both sides? Just on the one side?
Just on the school.
They will be ADA now, because you've got the little ramp at the corners going in. But it, but it will be.
Or will be.
Oh, nice.
There's only four packets?
Five, there's those.
Only have four packets. Unless there's two on that one, is there two paper clipped together there?
Yeah, we got it.
My first came to Groveland in 86, that road was just getting done. So that's got to be, what, 25, 30 years now it's been? Hard to believe. They took, they widened that road quite a bit back then.
Right, now we're going to...
Push it back.
They're going to narrow it a little. At the other end where Hastings floor, that's over 40 years old.
Wow.
That was done in 67. Well, it's almost 50 years old.
Wow.
48, oh, thank you.
We're all done with Bobby stuff?
Yes.
Is that right, Bob?
Yeah. I'll just look before I leave.
We'll see you again Monday night.
Coming in Monday night? Anything?
Sure.
He is?
Bob Arcali is?
No, that's me.
No.
No?
That's, um, Bill's agenda item.
Oh, okay. Discussion on the position, okay.
Okay, um...
Well, you're welcome to come in anyways if you'd like.
All right, stop by.
Before he goes, can I ask a question real quick?
Ask a question of Bob?
Well, yeah, because I left, I left him a message last week about the snow removal plowing at the ballpark, just requesting that they not push it up against the snack shack or in that general direction, because last year the snack shack flooded. And we lost our refrigerator when the snow melted and there was no place else for the water to go, because the parking lot was blocked by the snow pile. So, just asking that that not happen again.
Did you hear that, Bob? About the plowing at Washington Park, so they don't...
I don't know who plowed it last storm.
I think she said last year, or last storm.
Last, last year.
No, but someone plowed it last storm, and I don't know who did it.
Must have been me.
Maybe it was, um, Arnie Bird.
It might not be anybody.
He plays with the plow.
Yeah, he goes in there and plows that a lot.
So just so that we're all understanding.
Right, so we need to know anybody that goes in there to make sure the snow's not up against the building, which, when it melts or we have a thaw, it goes into the building and we lose equipment, um...
Do you leave that refrigerator on?
No, but it's still...
It's there.
It's still there. I mean, the whole place, we lost a lot of equipment too, so...
You store your equipment in there?
We store the equipment in the equipment shed side, yes.
Lost some equipment too, I know. You may want to, when Bob is done, you want to maybe bring the microphone closer to you so that people at home can hear your proposal. Thank you, Denise.
Okay. You guys ready? Anybody else coming?
No, just the four of us.
I know you probably heard and read a lot of things lately about me, and I just want to make a brief statement to tell you all, because I've worked with you all, that I feel that the Ethics Commission vindicated me on three out of four charges. And as baseball people, you know, three at bats out of four is a pretty good average, so, but I have options and I'll continue to pursue them. Do my best to take care of the town of Groveland and everybody that lives here. But I needed to say that because it's like the elephant in the room. So get that taken care of and we can proceed, okay?
So I have some paperwork that I'd like to share with you that we're going to present, I guess, and...
Sure.
Just so the people, just so the people at home know the purpose of the baseball group's presentation. We have the Community Preservation Committee, which approves projects such as recreational projects. However, because this project is going to occur on town-owned property, these folks have to get approval from the Board of Selectmen first. So that's the procedural reason why we're here. All right, so looking forward to hearing your proposal.
Okay, well, my, my name is Erin Pinkham, this is Joe Sullivan, and Marissa Ventreska, and Lisa Sowup. We are here to present a project for revitalizing Washington Park, which really needs a rehabilitation. It's pretty extensive. I provided you guys with my application that I plan to present to CPA with your approval. I think we have a lot of public support to do the project. I also have the endorsement from the Recreation Committee, and I'm hoping to get your endorsement as well tonight. The project consists of about 10 different items altogether, a couple of which we already have taken care of. The scoreboard and the fence in the outfield between the two fields. I was at the field today and they've started to put the posts in. The fence fabric has not been installed yet, but that is next on the agenda. So the first item is to repave the western parking lot where most people would see the buses parked. Currently, they're in kind of the middle section of the parking lot. That's what happens usually in the wintertime. So that is a couple of different options to repave that, to either start brand new or to repave it with two-inch state top over it after they level it with a binder. So there are a couple of different ways that they can do that. And obviously, pricing depends on the method by which they decide to pave it. And also, with different companies, I'm sure they have different pricing as well. The second one is to take care of the fence situation that we have. A lot of the fencing is dysfunctional and unsafe, so we plan to take down all the unsafe fencing and put up new fencing. It's in different areas all over the park. The third item is to get new outfield backstop netting. The tree situation has really damaged the netting. There are large holes, it's, it's rotted, so we need to, we need to get a new one. To add bleachers to the property, I'm looking to get about three different new bleachers for the property. With the direction that we're going with the baseball program, we have the opportunity to host an All-Star Weekend, get into tournament play, so that we can have more people at the park and really show off how great our fields are and how great our program can be. To install overhead lighting on the current AAA field, which will be our new majors field, in order for us to be able to play at the majors division after 6 o'clock earlier in the season and into the, into the fall, we really need to have lighting on the field. Otherwise, we can't play any of our games past probably 7 o'clock in the, in the earlier part of the season. The sixth item is to install warning tracks along the outfield fences on the majors and the AAA fields. I think that that's really a necessity at this point, where we're going to have more playing at the field. It's kind of a nice thing to let the kids know where the fence is going to be when they're fielding a ball, so they don't crash into the fence. The other, the next one is, number seven, is to build a weather-resistant bottom rail on all six of the dugouts, because currently it really needs to be taken care of. It's a, a problem with the dugout structures. They're really starting to show wear since they were built. Number eight is to overhaul the existing playground structure, the swings and the sandbox. It's to rebuild with all safety and ADA code compliance, including the installation by the company. We also have an opportunity to install playgrounds completely by community support, which will save the project about $22,000 if you do it with a community effort over the course of a weekend. If we have the playground company take care of that, then it will take them about a week to two weeks to get that project done. So number nine and 10 are improvements that we've provided on Groveland Baseball's dime as well as donation. So we've already purchased the new scoreboard, which will go in next spring. Then the new fence is starting to be installed currently. And then the last thing is, Sowup Painting has donated their services to paint all of the structures on the property, including the six dugouts and the snack shack. And I know that Lisa has drawings of the playground that she'd like to share, so that you can kind of see what direction we're going in. We've asked for additional swings to move the sandbox area to be away from the parking lot, so that it's a little bit more safe for toddlers. We've also added in toddler area, additional swings that are in basically the same location, just more of them. Safety, safety surfacing throughout the entire playground area, and then more of an agility, strength, and fun playground over the course of the whole structure. So I think it's a project that's very worthy for CPA funds. I think that we 100% qualify. I also think that it's very important for Groveland to have a nice park, not just for the baseball field side of it, but also because the pines is kind of inaccessible right now. And to be honest, the playgrounds are really kind of lackluster. And this was a donated playground, I don't even know when. So it would be kind of nice to have a really great whole complex for the town of Groveland.
Playground is donated?
Originally, that was...
The original, the standing, correct.
It was, we got, we, did, was it Wilburn or Wilmington?
We have a sign, we have a sign, I think it was Wilburn.
Was it, yeah.
Yes.
We were so grateful to get it.
Well, as I stated before, and I'll state again, that I'm 100% on board with it, and I think that the town of Groveland has everything in the town, from fire engines to police cars to open space to, you name it, Groveland's got it. Groveland does not have a decent park for their kids to play in, and I'm 100% on board. And I think that you've presented a good plan here, and I'm, would help you any way I can to get this thing forward. I just think it's a great, great thing for Groveland.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, I'd be anxious to try some of these things, like the zany zipper.
Maybe we can have a couple of meetings down there this morning.
I remember.
You guys can help us build it.
Right. I remember climbing up, they had to go down the slide with my little Nolan, when he was like four, and he looked at me and he said, "I know you can do it, Nana," so I did it.
Incidentally, I asked him to design the project in the shape of a baseball diamond, so there are major structures, playscapes on each of the four bases. And then the center where home plate, excuse me, the pitcher's mound is, is a baseball spin-around thingy.
Yep.
So...
Baseball spinabout.
Oh, and it also includes a covered seating area that looks out into the, the current AAA field with the option to have additional picnic tables underneath it for a shaded area to, to sit at and either watch a game or to observe the playground.
What happens if you don't get the lighting? You, you've already committed to the interleague.
We have. If that, if we don't get any light, I mean, we've already committed to, to this year. We won't have the lights for this year's season. We had a meeting last night with the ITBL, and it'll just mean that our games will be scheduled earlier in the, in the daytime or on the weekends, earlier in the day.
Question to the board, the last time there was a lighting project there, there was a significant effort to reaching out to all the abutters?
Well, I don't think they're, they're planning on expanding the hours, because we made an agreement a very long time ago, the lights off at 9 o'clock, right?
That would be, that would be the same.
Everybody recalls that.
But we're adding more lights, it's going to be brighter.
Lights are still down.
Wouldn't bother me, I'm just...
But at this, at this point in time, I don't know if that's going to be a fact.
I don't know if that'll be a factor, that's all.
Are all the fields going to be used till 9 o'clock?
Both fields at the same time, or just one light?
It's, it's a matter of scheduling.
Okay. Now, I just want to, I just want to bring that up, because if we're going to increase the volume, traffic, now we have two fields going, both with lights on, I can guarantee you that that's going to strike some neighbors as a difference. That could be an objection, an objectionable item, so...
Well, I know most of the neighbors...
What I'd like to do is, I'd like to work with you, but I'll go knocking on doors with you if we have to.
I know all those neighbors, I grew up in Atlanta.
Are you here for funding right now? For the, to, are okay for the funding and if it, to move it forward?
That's correct, that's probably it.
You're not here for the actual project to say, you are kind of, but you're not really?
They want an endorsement.
They want an endorsement, it's a good idea type thing, let's go ahead, and you're going to go to the next step to CPA or...
No, um...
I think what Joe's trying to say is, he don't want to move it forward because, maybe because you're worried about the neighbors?
No, 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 let me, let me, let me, let me restate that. I definitely, all you can get from us tonight is an endorsement, because the CPA funds are not under our control. So by, by endorsement, the way we'll, I think we should deliver that endorsement is by sending a letter to the CPC saying that we endorse this project, subject to your due diligence and funding availability. Simple enough. That's the first step. The second step is, I probably would be happy to take an active role with you in doing things such as knocking on doors and making sure, you know, promoting the, the concept so that we don't have backlash that, oh, we didn't know that we're going to get more people and more lights and, you know, double games going on on two fields. Because that might get some...
It's my old hood, so I know that.
I think we're going to be okay, so the personal relationships, that's fine.
Those people love having the kids play.
That's my only concern.
When we put up the lights originally, which was, I think, eight years ago, the netting that Erin mentioned, we put that in because the neighbors asked that...
Yeah, the roaches were getting them in the pool, I remember.
Now, now it's in a condition where the trees have, you know, fallen on them over the years, but, so I think this field though, won't, it doesn't go quite as deep as, as that, or the houses are not quite as close as that.
And the lighting is going to be facing away from the house, it's not facing toward the house. The light's going to be facing toward the wooded section, not toward their houses.
Yeah.
But I mean, I think personally, I think we're jumping the gun worried about lighting at this point. I would like to see us just say, yes, we're endorsing this plan tonight, move forward to your next step. And then when we get to the next step, we'll, we'll cross that road when we come to it. And maybe I'm putting the pot before the hots or whatever, but I don't want to see anything stop this from moving forward, that's all I'm saying. I'd like to see it go to the next step.
Well, I, I, I share your passion, Bill, but there is a process, and we have to be mindful that, you know, we have to allow the Community Preservation Committee to make the final decision, and in their due process and any other boards that are affected, we have to make sure that we're not doing anything that would be construed as, you know, creating a condition that would be uncomfortable to the abutters, that's all.
That's a good point.
So I'd like to echo also my colleagues...
I wanted to bring something up too.
My colleagues, and we can have it for a discussion as soon as I make the motion, if you'd like to second it.
Before a motion, I just want to bring one thing up.
Okay, please do.
Do you mind?
No, no.
Thank you.
Of course.
You know, we, it's town-owned properties still, and we have a procurement officer who has to do, send everything out for bid. Do you understand that?
I do understand that.
Okay, and that's Denise. Denise will have to, you'll have to be working closely with Denise, she'll have to be on board every step of the way. Denise, do you want to add anything to that?
I do, so your items I and K in your write-up, so your Board of Directors cannot award the project, it's the town that awards the project. It's the town that would supervise the project as well. You know, certainly you could review the bids, but it's the town, because it's town funds and the town property, that we control those bids and awarding.
That's fine. My concern with that is that, is it going to be a selectman that controls the property project? I mean, I don't understand how, how we can do all the work in presenting the project and then we don't get to implement it. I understand that the process needs to be, the bids need to be done the right way and everything else, but I'm concerned that the implementation won't be done by us.
I don't know what you mean by implementation, what are you implementing?
That we will be the, we will be the people that contact the playground people and things like that, because we've done all the legwork and we've done all the, you know, the, the fact finding about what we needed and, and things like that. And we've met with at least one playground committee that, you know, we have a rapport with him and things like that. I'm concerned that somebody that is not personally invested in the project will not get to, you know, implement it.
No, 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 you would still work, we would still work with each other. On the affordable housing, I award the project, I deal with the engineering firm, but the Affordable Housing Committee is the one answering all the questions day to day. They're the ones actually speaking to them and figuring out what the scope is, but I still am the overall supervisor of the project.
So what you would have is, you'll have a committee that would, would work with her, and you guys would put the park together? Your committee and Denise would work, same as the pines over here is doing, same thing, it's just a committee. You guys will be doing the, what you've been doing, running what you're running, but she'll just be taking care of the bidding and what have you.
Because there is definite Massachusetts general laws about bidding projects.
Oh, I understand that.
We have to follow those rules.
So the, the quotes that we've already kind of gotten to get an idea of how much the project will cost, are you able to use those as a, you just put them out to whomever you decide to put them out to?
No, it has to be advertised in the State Central Register, and anyone who wants to bid can bid.
Okay, so we can, we can contact the people that we've already talked to and suggest to them to bid on the project.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, you're, you're going to be driving the project, it's just the technical aspects we have to do.
I mean, I just would hate for the people that we've already reached out to to not have an opportunity...
No, they do.
Okay.
They do.
They have an opportunity, but they have to know, they can't, you know, I'm seeing this beautiful drawing, but we may not award it to this company if they're not the lowest bidder.
Understood.
So, yes, but they can certainly all participate.
Those people you've been in contact with?
Is it only based on the lowest bidder?
It depends, it depends how we go out. If we go out for price, it's based on the lowest bidder. If we put qualifications, then you actually have to, we have to have criteria and a ranking process to figure out who we would award the bid to.
And can we work with you on that aspect of it?
Yep.
Okay.
And when the bids come in, they can be present?
Correct, it depends how we award it. Yes, if we're doing by price, there's no need to have...
Because we're all opened at the same time.
Correct, if we're doing it based on qualifications and criteria, then yes, you would put a scope together and we would rank them as a group to see how we rank each proposal.
Whatever relationships you have, just introduce them to Denise and work with her.
Well, I don't want to get, they shouldn't be doing that.
No, that's a violation of the law.
Correct.
No, but to put them out, to put them into the opportunity to bid.
Bid process, right.
You know, this, this is going out to bid.
That's specifically what I meant. If you have a recommendation, let, let her know and she can decide.
I don't know, she still doesn't want to know.
She can't know.
Totally objective.
The only time when we notify them, but you're not going to say...
Let her bid on such a special day.
Keep an eye open, keep an eye open for that bid. Bid on it.
We just don't want all of our legwork to be...
No, no, no. We hear it, yeah.
Right, we, we can hear you.
Okay. Strike that from the record.
We appreciate all you've done. Yeah, because that's, it has to be totally objective.
Yeah, I, it's a learning curve for me, so...
So for the CPA bid, you'd like me to change the items I and K?
Yes, so with I, I would just say, you know, Board of Directors and the Town's Finance Director, and then the same with the budget. It should be the town will obtain three bids and award it.
Okay.
Good point.
One of the things you brought up earlier was, you were talking about how you have it laid out as a baseball diamond and what have you?
Yep.
As you build your plan and you submit your plan to go out to bid, that might be one thing you might say, you know, you might, you guys would have the input of how you've done, you know what I'm saying?
Oh, right, we would put a scope of work together.
Right, you do the scope of work back and forth, you come up with a plan, that's how it would go out to bid, so...
Okay, it's a great plan.
Yes, and unfortunately, Erin, you do need to strike that last sentence about hiring local companies. We can't put that in, because it may not be, so...
Where is that again?
Item K.
K?
Item K.
As much as we may want to do that, we can't advertise that.
We'd like to.
I might be able to make a motion now.
Well, just hold on. Denise, where did you see that?
It's item K on the narrative section.
Okay.
It's the budget, it's the section, it's the back page of, it's on the double-sided, so the first page, backside.
Modifications made.
First page, backside, they.
Done with all.
Yeah, thank you. Good job.
You think we should bid on, on price or qualifications?
Oh, we can discuss that and see what, you know, normally, um, it would be price based on something like this. If we can justify why we need qualifications, then we can certainly, um, go follow that section of the law, but something like this is normally a price.
The biggest thing is to try and get it before, for funding, at this point.
Right.
You gotta get your funding.
So after we get our funding approval, then we meet with you and go over the bidding process and go from there?
Correct, so the way it would work is town meeting once, if the CPC approves that it goes to town meeting, then the funds become available for July 1st. So sometime between town meeting and July 1st, we can start working on what we want, um, so that early July, once the funds are available, we can go to bid with it.
Okay, so theoretically, this time next year, we could have a great new park.
Wonderful opening. I did ask Mike to extend that, I thought you might have needed some more time, but you obviously were all set to go. Brian Lynch told me you'd gone away on vacation, so didn't want you to be under the gun.
He let me know while I was in animal kingdom.
I know Joe's on, I know Joe's on that committee, but I, I was watching some of it on TV, and Joe could probably speak better than I can on this, but I know you, if you do the right presentation, they wanted a real good presentation, am I correct? And, and show how much you've, I think it was some of the money that you've already put into the project, and go back into the project, and, and talk about your volunteers, and really go in there with a good package, because they've got a lot before them, and he could probably speak more about this, but I'd really like to see this go through, and I think it's, we really, really need this.
Yeah, just, uh, thank you, Bill, we, um, we had a meeting the other night, and we did extend the deadline according to, uh, Betty, uh, Betty's suggestion, not as far out though as, as you wanted, the middle of the month in January.
That's fine.
So you're, so you, you've got some time, but what you wanna do is you wanna write this down, we're gonna meet in Jan, on January twenty-second and January twenty-ninth, those are two dates that are coming up, so all, so you have to go before the CPC again, once you get the endorsement from us, so.
So.
Twenty-second and twenty-ninth, those are Thursday nights.
If I have my package ready to submit all my copies next week?
Yeah, you're done, you don't, yeah, you're fine, yeah.
I mean, do I, I?
Yeah, you're fine.
Would assume that I would get some kind of a, a, a record of?
Well, what I'm gonna recommend, what, it's, it's part of my motion, so.
Okay.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion, and then if the board agrees, and then you'll, you'll have the answer to your question.
So, okay, so let me just go back just a second. So theoretically, if I am able to present my whole project next week to turn all my paperwork in, then I go to see if it gets approved and formally presented to CPC, okay?
I'm assuming that was scheduled, right, would they reach out and say, she's either on the agenda for the twenty-second and twenty-ninth?
Sure, I don't know how many projects are coming in.
Right, we're gonna do that, we're gonna actually say, okay, can you come in on such and such a date? So if you, you're gonna be the first proposal, like, obviously, because you're just about done, you're gonna tweak it. You can send that into Mike, we have a deadline of January thirteenth.
Yep.
You've already beaten that deadline, so you're gonna be the first one to be called in.
Great.
Which is good, because it's a, it's a large ticket also.
It is.
Else, Bill, anything else? Good.
You're gonna make that motion, Joe, please?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Selectmen endorses the Groveland Baseball League's proposal as to be modified according to suggestions made by the Finance Director tonight. And that proposal is attached to a letter of endorsement that is sent from the Board of Selectmen to the Community Preservation Committee for consideration.
I'll second that motion.
And any discussion.
Does anything need to be added to Joe's motion? Do you think that's, covers what we need to cover?
No, I think, I just, the letter won't go with this, because I'm gonna send it to them and I'll copy Erin, so I won't actually submit the plan, I'll just submit the letter.
Yeah, not the plan, no, just the letter, and, okay, that's fine. What about, what about this?
I, I have.
No, because that will come from Erin directly.
Okay, then, the changes.
So I, I will email the CP, or I'll send a letter to the CPC and copy Erin, so she has it.
So do you have the motion, or do I have to restate it? Okay, that's fine.
And I have a second from Bill Dunn, and I'll ask for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
And we had that wonderful letter from Liam Sullivan.
Oh, you did?
Yes, we did.
And we, we wanted to acknowledge it when we were on TV.
Really?
But the TV wasn't working.
The fourth grade project, um, that was great.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
You can watch Monday, it's on our agenda Monday.
But I have four kids, so I.
I was just gonna say, you have four children, so I understand why you might not know that.
He told us that you were donating fifty thousand dollars to this project.
And I thought you were the judge with you.
You'll have to help me earn it then.
The fourth grade had a project to do, and it was wonderful.
Oh.
And, uh, I just think those things are great, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's a sweetie.
I'll have him fill me in when I get home.
Yep, Monday we're gonna talk about it. Yep.
I'll, I'll work with you.
I think he can become a governor planner, don't you?
Yes.
We'll knock on some doors, say hello, and let people know. That would be fun.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, good job.
See you soon. Good luck with your next phase. Okay, um, we didn't do our, we did resident comments.
Get the warrants and the library appointments.
Okay. Do I have a motion to do the payroll warrant, um, deduction warrant, bill warrant, we'll, we'll do payroll separately, please, so I?
Okay. All right. Let me start off with the deduction warrant, deduct warrant, fifteen dash twenty-one A for a total of twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. Do I have a second?
Second, Bill?
I'll second that.
All in favor on deduction warrant?
Aye. Bill warrant number fifteen dash twenty-three for a total of six hundred and eighty thousand and twenty dollars and fifty-eight cents, do I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.
And the payroll warrant, uh, fifteen dash twenty-three for a total of one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, I'm sorry, one hundred and thirty-six, three hundred and ninety-one dollars and fifty-nine cents, do I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is, um, Bill and Joe approving that, and I abstain on the payroll warrant, for reasons, um, known to everybody. So, um, we need votes of the board for an appointment of library assistant, Amanda Levy, from two eighty Main Street, apartment D, Raleigh, Mass, for fourteen and a half hours at a rate of ten dollars per hour. When needed, she will cover the other library assistants' hours, appointment dates effective December fifteenth, twenty fourteen. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved?
Second, Bill?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Is it Amanda Levy or Levy?
Honestly, I don't know.
Very good, and I think, does that conclude everything?
There's just a few other correspondence, I didn't list them on here, but just so you have them in your packet, um, you do have a letter from Lynn Stanton from the Council on Aging.
Yes, very nice of Lynn Stanton, who sent us a thank you for the holiday gift of time off given to employees after Christmas and New Year's Day, so that was nice of Lynn, thank, thank her for her nice letter for us.
Also included in the package is, um, a copy of the budget package that I distributed to departments, I think, just so you're aware that that has gone out, um, and what is required of departments this year, it's a little bit different than what's been required in the past. So, I have asked, um, a narrative from all departments of what their, any revenue they take in, what their expenditures, what their changes are, some new initiatives that they may be looking into.
Key word being a narrative?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then I have two spreadsheets that I've asked them to complete, um, one shows all personnel in each department with their salaries, so that we actually know all personnel and their individual salaries, and then one with the budget, salary and expenses. Those are due back on January ninth, at which point I will then compile them and meet with you as a board to, um, go over recommendations, and then the Finance Committee will start working on, um, there's part of the budget. And then the last item in there is just a letter from Essex County Retirement, um, with the fiscal fifteen appropriation as calculated.
No member of this board, do you go to these meetings?
I haven't gone to the meetings yet, they always seem to be in odd times.
Okay, but you could go.
But I can go, yes, I do receive the updates, I do receive the agendas.
Okay. The crux of this letter is to inform us of changes, or, I see where something's not fair, says Mr. Castro.
Yes, it's really just to show what the, um, appropriation is going to be for next year.
Okay.
For the whole system, or?
Yep, for Essex, the Essex Regional Retirement System.
Right, it's still an unfunded liability.
Correct.
Okay.
So that's just information.
Information, yeah.
Information, thank you. Denise, do you need another copy of this to hold on to, would you?
No, I don't think so, I have, um, I have the copy now, so I think I'm all set with that.
Okay.
And that is all I have for you.
Okay, and when we meet on Monday, we have quite a bit going on, correct?
Correct, so you do have a draft agenda for Monday evening, um, we are putting a full agenda in prior to your joint meeting with the Finance Board, Capital Improvement and Fire Chief, so there is a lot. I will, um, just remind the board, the resident comment section, the, the rules that really govern the resident comment is three minutes.
I know, I'm sorry.
It, it's fine, it's just, we need to be, because that really should have been an agenda item, so really need to be careful with people coming before the board in that resident comment section.
I, I, it's, it's, we're grappling with it, it's, it's a good thing, we need to be a little bit better at it, but, but that's okay, we'll, we'll get to it, I'm, I'm confident. And what, what will work is if we have, and I'll be happy to do it every week, I'll actually read out that public comment, I'll remind everyone, three minutes, blah, 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 here's what it is, and then Betty will, will be able to enforce it.
Yes, and, and we do need to reiterate, you know, people cannot come before here and complain about public officials, or, you know, that's really not the forum.
The primary, the primary need for, for it is to come in and make recommendations or requests for future agenda items, that's the primary thing. Or if something is serious, then we say, okay, thank you, we'll, we'd like to put that on as an agenda, we get it, we understand your concerns.
Yes, the frustration is really getting ratcheted up, and, you know, it is our responsibility to try to, um, find some.
Yeah, that's good, that's, it's.
Some solution, some.
The problem is, most people in this town think the selectmen are the people, their last stop and their last voice, you know what I'm saying, that's what they think, and they, and, and, and it's hard, because they don't realize.
Well, I understand, because we don't have a mayor, we don't have a city council, so they do come here hoping to find, get an answer.
And they think we're the, we're the, we're the last stop, and, and then they think that we can do all these, do all these things, and they don't realize that we can't, you know, and that's what makes it frustrating, and then they come before all these boards